And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in the council chamber is set up to show those attending persons tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pleasure of the meeting. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Council Dilliba?
Here.
Council Fisher?
Here.
Council Kennedy?
Here.
Council Powers?
Here.
Council Rees?
Here.
Council Scamperly?
Here.
Corn present.
We have several presentations tonight. We will begin with police chief, Mark Burns.
Good evening, Dean Mayor, council, members of the community. Give you my update here at the Augsburg Police Department. The last update we did was in March. We continue to have nineteen sworn officers at the police department, two dispatchers, one administrative aide. They have zero open vacancies. Three of these patrolmen are on modified duty with long-term injuries. I expect to have one back this fall. The other two are unknown. I have one patrolman who's in the academy who's actually going to graduate. I believe it's this Thursday, the twenty-sixth at eleven a.m. We're very excited for patrolmen in the field to graduate and start joining our ranks. As far as projects going, we finally got that police tip line up and going. I see the Journal did a little bit of an article on it. But that is readily available on the city's website. Under the police tab, it's right on the left-hand side, report a tip. It's a fill-in-the-blank form and it gets sent to an email that's monitored by myself, the lieutenant, and our two detectives. The only issue that I see with the tip line is you do have to have an account with the city website. So if anyone does that's listening would like to report a tip, make sure you sign up with the city's website first. We've completed our evidence room management. Our evidence room is up to par the way it should be, one step closer getting to accreditation. For that, I have to thank Detective Leclair for all his hard work in getting that done. We finished the upgrade of our handguns. We have upgraded to the generation five Glock forty caliber handguns with a red dot aperture sight. For once, we are at the forefront of technology when it comes to firearms. Our cadet just got the best shot award in the academy and I know a lot of that has to do with our upgrade in equipment. So that was definitely a move in the right direction. Everyone seems pleased with what we've purchased. We've also completed our traffic safety grant through the governor's traffic safety board. We're waiting to hear on that. I believe we would be eligible for up to eight thousand dollars for overtime for traffic safety enforcement. Some of our continued projects that we hope to be finished up here in the next couple of months is the installation of a license plate reader, which is fully grant-funded. The issues we're having with that is, as with everything, some of the parts are in back order. So the company, NDI, is having issues. We're hoping for an early spring install. Looks like now it's going to be more of a midsummer installation for this piece of equipment. We're still working diligently with myself and other chiefs across the county on an officer wellness program. I believe we're making great strides in this and people have reached out from all over for funding and ideas and to volunteer for this. Our officers are continuing to be trained as peer support officers for one another. We just had one officer that returned from a three-day training for this, which was more of a group for not just officer to officer, but also for family members as the officer spouses were also invited to go to this training. So he came back with great reviews. I can see that being very beneficial, not just to our officers, but to our extended family who all deal with the same stresses that we do. We have two pending grants that myself and Lieutenant Maxner have been working diligently on over the last week. The first one is the cops grant. Similar to the firefighters, I believe it's at the safety grant.
Safer.
Safer grant. It's a similar grant to that where, for example, the first year before it funded, that three-quarters funded and then half funded and then the municipality would have to take on the cost of an officer. The sheriff's office received this grant last year. They're able to add a officer with this and that's our intentions as well. We can offset some costs and get another officer or two with a grant would be wonderful. We're also applying for a ballistic armor grant. We did update all of our ballistic armors last year. It doesn't look like we're going to be able to be reimbursed with this grant, but any new purchases that we make between April and September of 2022 are all eligible. So our new hire that's coming out of the academy and any potential hire that we can make here at the end of 2022, we should have their vest fully paid for. And accreditation, again, that's going to be on there for probably the next year and a half or so. That's a goal of mine and we're working toward that one step at a time. So crime trends, opioids and methamphetamine are the two drugs that still run rampant throughout our city. Opioids, we're finding in all sorts of forms, not just as heroin and fentanyl, but also fake pills. They're to mimic even a blood pressure pill. That's a stamping on them. That's what we're finding on the streets, but they're actually just compressed fentanyl. And that's what some of the latest overdoses have been and be these fake-looking blood pressure pills, which is very unfortunate. Methamphetamine, again, that continues to come from the southern border, straight up through. So you know, the goal is there to hit the supply lines before it gets here to northern New York. As any time of year, every time of the, this time of year, the spring time going into summer, our noise complaints increase. I say noise complaints by not just loud music, but loud vehicles, motorcycles, those little mopeds that are running around out there. We're getting a lot more complaints than that, as well as burglaries, not so much home burglaries or residential burglaries, but in the sense of garages and sheds are being broken quite often. So it really would urge the public to make sure you're locking up your outbuildings. If you have cameras, that's wonderful. Be watching your neighbors as well because our burglaries are increasing. So some of these issues that we're seeing in crime trends, noise and burglaries, it kind of goes hand-in-hand with what some of our problems are. I'm going to start with vehicle and traffic enforcement. Our traffic stops are down fifty-six percent this year. At this point last year, we stopped one hundred and ninety-two, excuse me, at this point last year, we stopped three hundred and forty-four cars. At this point this year, we've only stopped one hundred and ninety-two. So that's a hundred and fifty-two less vehicles that have been stopped. And that's not just a traffic ticket or a young driver learning that there's consequences for speeding or running a stop sign. That's a potential, every encounter is a potential criminal in a vehicle. You never know what you're going to find in a traffic stop, anything from a handgun to drugs to human trafficking and that does occur. So you know, that's a goal to get those traffic stops back up. Our complaints, on the other hand, are higher this year. We're on track to be five hundred complaints over last year's complaints already at this point in the year. And really, we're just coming into our busy season. So now we're projecting to reach two thousand, or excuse me, twelve thousand complaints for the end of 2022. Last year, we were about ten thousand complaints. And so again, our complaints are going up, but our traffic stops are down. Just for what real numbers are, so far this year, our officers have handled three thousand four hundred and sixteen complaints. Our hiring process has also changed. We have done several background checks here in the last couple of months. And there's some new guidelines we have from the attorney general's office. And one of the biggest changes are psychological tests. We were never required to do those before and now we are. And the issue with a psychological test is that there is now one more test besides a medical and an eye test is you have the psych test. And if somebody fails that psych test, they have the option to appeal it and then take the test again with another doctor before I can move on, pass this person on the list. So I kind of need to keep that in mind. If we're going to hire somebody that it can't be middle of December for a January academy, it's going to take me a couple of months to get someone potentially hired and through. And so that's a big change. I know we all, we would do our background checks in the past, get all ready to hire, wait for the budget to pass. We knew who or how many we could hire and we'd squeeze them into their doctor's appointments and get them to that January academy. It's simply not going to work going into 2023, not to put pressure on the council, but that's the reality of it. We're going to have to decide what we're going to have for manpower, you know, early in the fall. That's the only way I can get someone to the January academy. And with that being said, we have the option now to use an August academy that SUNY Possum is now putting on. So I would definitely appreciate the ability to hire two for that August academy because then they'd be ready to work the road in the middle, sorry, about March of 2023. They'd be ready to go instead of September or October when we use the January academy. So our biggest problem we're having is manpower. Last update, I spoke to about the struggles we're having on the administrative end of things with lack of manpower and the duties and as well as our detectives unit. Where my next hire, my intentions would have been to hire one more person and promote someone to a detective, which would give us three detectives. But we have a manpower problem just straight across the board. I was given nineteen officers at budget time. I told you that I needed twenty-two as my bare minimum and that wasn't minimum. Nineteen, for you know, lack of better terms, we've been putting our fingers in the holes in the dam and keeping it from overflowing, but those holes keep coming and I can't plug any more holes without more bodies. You know, the complaints are increasing, our traffic stops are going down and that's, like I told you last time, we're reactive and we're not proactive. I can't be a proactive police department without the proper bodies. My guys need time off, my guys and gals need time off so they can be at their best, they can serve this community at their best. And I'm forcing people in for overtime like crazy. My next twenty shifts, I have fourteen of those shifts are on overtime and that's just to make the place run. Again, I'm asking you as council, that's a council problem, that's not a me problem. You made me your chief to run this department for public safety, for the safety of the citizens and safety for my officers. And I can't adequately support the mission of this department or adequately provide safety to this city with nineteen officers. My number is my number and I'm going to need twenty-five and that's what I'm going to need moving forward. So I'm putting that out there now so everyone can think on that. Like I said, I'm going to need a couple of months' notice to be able to get anyone to any academy, whether you allow me to hire for the August academy or the January academy. I'm going to need at least sixty days to make that happen. Any questions on what's been going on with the PD?
Mark, I saw on Facebook this weekend that there's a memo sent out by the city manager that you don't, you don't have it. They pulled the detective from narcotics.
So we pulled a detective. And ultimately, it's my decision to say that we're, it's going to be narcotics. And the reason I have to say that is if we only have one detective, that one detective can't do narcotics by himself. You can't even do a simple drug buy with one detective. So essentially, by only having one detective, my department can't do narcotics. So that's the functions that we are giving up, yes.
Are we requesting help from the sheriffs and the troopers?
Absolutely, sir. But to keep in mind, the state police troop B narcotics is supposed to be fourteen detectives. And that's from Plattsburgh to the Jefferson County line. They currently have seven to cover that territory. Two are assigned to St. Lawrence County, but they're being pulled to other entities within the troop B to support their own mission. The sheriff's office has two detectives that are dedicated to narcotics work. One is brand-new and is still in training. So that new detective is not able to come over here and run an investigation on his own at this time. So as much as I'd love to say that we had help on the way, we, honestly, we don't.
All police forces are in the same situation?
There is, it's a national issue of hiring police officers right now. Everybody seems to be short, yes.
Yeah.
What did the detective work for shift?
So.
Chief, I'm sorry, chief, I just chimed in. I just have a couple of questions. God bless you for holding it down as best as you can in the difficult.
Mr. Powers, I don't think you heard Mr. Fisher's question yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't mind me answering that.
No, I apologize.
He asked what the detectives are working for shifts. So they're not really within the confines of the contract stuck with like particular shifts. So I am able to use them for whatever the mission is, whether it's Monday through Friday, eight to four. I've had them on evenings when that was what was needed for what we were investigating at the time, so I wasn't paying overtime.
But what have they been doing? What have they been at for the last month?
For the last month, they've been on ten-hour days. So every other Friday, Monday, one of them would have off. And that was just to kind of alleviate the fact that my patrolmen are working twelve-hour shifts.
I'm getting to like day shift, evening shift and night shift.
Okay.
Because predominantly, drug work is done usually in the evening.
Yep.
Or in the hours of darkness.
Yep.
So if we've got, we're loading up in the back all day long with people and then when the drug work comes, we call it for overtime, I'm sure that you could get more. One, I know one guy can't go up and do the work, but they'll be lining up to come in. And the county will send over the drug task force people if a drug buy is set up. I've never had them say no. And I worked very closely with Jimmy Hartley when I was doing it and I never had an issue having manpower or somebody that wanted to go for rides. We take people from the road sometimes if there have to be, you know, enough people on the road.
Right, but the issue I have right now, Council Fisher, is I only have one detective back there. So I can't ask him to take every rape, robbery, burglary.
No, I understand.
On top of it.
It's not, it's not like we're all specialized in law enforcement of particular things. The bottom line is you're in all the, all the crimes, all the, anything that's on the books, you know. It doesn't matter if it's narcotics, it doesn't matter whether you're a patrolman, whether or not you're a sergeant, lieutenant, a chief. Bottom line is you uphold all those laws too. So it's like, start saying, because we only have one narcotics guy and he's not there, that drug work's not going to get done. I don't think would be a fair statement.
So do you support getting rid of the narcotics detective?
I don't support getting rid of it is one. But if, at the present time, the patrol has to be done, people, when you pick up the phone to call, somebody has to show up.
We're understaffed clearly.
So.
And we talked about that at budget time and you guys not support putting twenty-two guys in.
You have the support to get revenue growth over your.
There was actually two who were going to get hired and we voted no, if you remember right. And we only got one.
And we got to have revenue growth. That's the answer for all of our problems. Got to have revenue growth.
Mayor. Before council debates, for us, want to throw a couple of things here for context. So if you heard what Mark said, we started with nineteen. Police chief and lieutenant drop us seventeen. Two investigators would drop us to fifteen. Three people out injured drops us to twelve patrol officers. One officer in the academy drops us to eleven officers. And don't forget those eleven officers, two of those officers are funded by the Augsburg Bridge and Port Authority and are subject to meeting that mission. So let's say that we get, of two people, we get use of one, let's say, if we quantify that. So what Mark is dealing with now is trying to staff twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five with ten patrol officers. So my temporary decision to pull one detective, and I'm considering pulling them both, is until council does just that, we can't do it all with the resources we have. It doesn't, we can split hairs all night about a detective or this or that. You can't run twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five ops with nine or ten people trying to keep at least two people on the road. The numbers don't add up. So it's not, this is again, we've reduced the number of resources. We haven't reduced the missions, the expectations of them commensurate. So council's decision here is not about narcotics officer or not. There's no question, we need that help. One, it's ridiculous to think that one narcotics officer is standing between drugs or no drugs in the city. We've understaffed that function if we're going to do that. So the question for council, and we'll be prepared to brief this at the next council meeting, with courses of action decisions like we have for the fire department tonight, what missions does council want the police force to continue with the resources you've given them? Or are you prepared to give more resources to do more missions? But you're not going to shove a full-service police department set of missions into nineteen people, especially when you're down three or four at any given time. It's not adding up. So we shift over here to cover this, we shift over here to cover that. It isn't lining up. So at budget time, twenty got approved and then we had some crazy thing happen and only nineteen got approved. But we talked about this, there are things that aren't going to get done. And the twenty, in a perfect scenario, was all twenty are able to work. I mean, in one incident in Walmart last fall, we lost two officers for a known length of time, just that fast. That was the two officers we had on duty for the whole shift. So I mean, we've, it's, council has to decide where we're going with the police department. So part of the, you know, the emphasis of the initiatives last week were, are we going to study changing the construct of the departments or how we do it? The answer from council clearly was no. So now what council's got to decide is, here's the resources you're willing to put forward for the police department. The police chief owes back a briefing, here's what he can do well with those resources and here's what he won't be able to do. It's really, it's coming down to that simple of a decision, it really is. I mean, there's no, there's, you can, again, we can split hairs all night, banter about one officer here, one officer there, SRO, not SRO. It really now is about a resource package. What are we going to, what are we going to resource, what can we do with those resources?
Yeah, if New York State is doing their part, providing that the number of detectives that were needed, you know, that would relieve us of this pressure on, you know, having detectives for all our investigations.
They're trying to hire two, mayor. They have about a five-year plan to run academies twice a year to get the state police back up to numbers they're supposed to be at. Said unfortunately, it's a national issue, having a lack of officers that are qualified for the job or frankly, want to do the job.
I remember the ball, he was more than happy to, I mean, the state police will do anything they can do for us anytime, whenever. It's, but Mark's right, it's, they were, they were slapped the last couple of years pretty hard. They're covering enormous territory. If the council wants to pass a resolution, make an official request for a specific thing that we need for the state police, he will look at that, send it to headquarters. We talked about that before, we didn't opt to do that. But if it's time now to say we want to look at the state police giving more assistance with this function or that function, helping during a certain period of time with patrol operations, we need to package that with a resolution and send that to the state police to consider. They've done it in other places. So it's not out of the question, but at the moment, I don't know that the resource answer is going to be that even if they are willing to do it, that it can do it. But those are, that's part of the things that we've got to consider. What are we going to do moving forward?
I mean, Governor, they pulled their night shift. They, like I said, have state troopers, sheriffs and.
Yeah, that was about five years ago. That was about five years ago. They have a fully functioning police department at this point. But yeah, when they were, when they were short, the state police would help cover the village.
I talked to Mayor McDougal.
We meet once a month as the chiefs and I just spoke with the chief down at Governor and she says their full staff run twenty-four hours a day and the state police haven't been in town.
I think Council Powers has been trying to get it.
Oh, yes, yes, Mike.
First off, Steve, I didn't, Steve Fisher, Council Fisher, I didn't, I didn't hear your question. So I apologize if I stepped on it, wasn't my intention. Just a couple of things here, obviously, as the chief mentioned, it's a nationwide issue. I guess from our standpoint, I mean, what are we looking to do for any potential recruitment going forward or additional parole patrol staff? And as far as drug investigations and shared services, I mean, historically, and chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but historically, I mean, many of the great, great work that's been done in even in Council Fisher's tenure, jointly with federal and state and local agencies have been able to, through investigations, have been able to make sizable drug busts and eradicate the streets of potential danger and weapon, to include weapons, you know, on top of the drug trade that's out there. And again, it's an issue statewide. I mean, we're asking the state police to do more, you know, to do some of our work when there are a lot at fourteen and they've only got seven and the sheriffs are strapped as well. I sympathize with you, chief, and I wish you nothing but the best. I can only imagine the stressors that many of you, many of you and your men and women are dealing with and I sympathize with them. Just a couple of quick comments here on your presentation. One, as far as officer wellness program, have you heard of anything called Valor? V A L O R.
Yes, I have.
It's, it's actually a pretty strong program, which is free at the federal level to be able to assist. I don't, I don't know if that's something that you may be looking at. It's something we're looking at in the Department of Corrections with the governor's office at the moment. And right now, just in the short strokes, it appears to be a very good program. I don't know if that's something that you're looking at or if there's something else specific to your needs, but I wish you nothing but the best with that. As far as the fake pills, Suboxone gets hidden as a narcotic that's, at times appears to be Tylenol or some kind of other pain reliever like Nap, Nap, Naproxin or I can't even, I don't even know how to say the name now. But you know, those are other drugs that are, that are out there. And the traffic stop, I end up having to call the police the other day over an incident, a couple individuals that was evident under the influence that had an incident at Walmart. I'm sure you're aware of it, chief. That had the potential to create quite a bit of danger and harm to a lot of the shoppers that were going in and out of Walmart the other day. And, you know, that's, it was pretty evident that they were under the influence of a pretty strong narcotic at the time. And I commend, I commend you and your force for doing the work under difficult circumstances.
Thank you.
What's the name of that federal grant that has overtime money in it? How much do we have?
I don't, the only federal, only grant I have for overtime is the Stone Garden Grant. That can't be to bolster our shifts. It's above and beyond what our minimum staffing is. But our budget for overtime for 2022 out of that grant was sixty-four thousand dollars. Not that all sixty-four thousand had to be spent in 2022, but that was what the grant allotment is. Typically, the way that program's currently working is the entire shift, we have four, we have four shifts. One of the shifts, any detective would work it all together as a single shift, whether it's after their regular scheduled day or on their day off. And it's straight up to be criminal interdiction, was usually two or three marked cars and one undercover car. And they just watch local drug houses pull cars over as they leave. And that was a huge, huge asset to our seizures the last year of over eight hundred thousand dollars of drugs and money. And I believe six handguns and as we know, a shotgun with a grenade launcher. So that was all, all that work was done on the Stone Garden Grant. They just don't simply have the time for that type of work on their shift. It's been a great grant for us for, since I believe, 2010, 2011. And it's been cut for 2022 and then we're just, 2021 and 2022 significantly cut by about a third. But as of right now, we're still working off 2020 funds and we have a sixty-four grand left.
And in addition to that, what's your budget for overtime?
Our budget was two hundred thousand.
Plus the sixty-five?
Correct, but that, you've just got to keep in mind that sixty-five doesn't count toward like if our shift is short. I can't use the Stone Garden Grant to pay for a short shift.
How much is left of the two hundred?
What's that, sir?
How much is left of the two hundred? You know?
We're almost to June, so it's halfway.
Yeah, we're pretty close. Actually, the comptroller and I just went over this. I think we're, was it just over fifty percent, Angel? Just over fifty percent.
And Stone Garden, you use that, what's the word, force someone to, on overtime, it's volunteer?
Yes, we don't force anyone in for volunteer. So it's all volunteer. So yes, there's sometimes, like I said, there'd be two or three marked cars and none marked or there's sometimes times where it's just one marked car out there running the detail. But I try to get them to do it as a shift for multiple reasons. It gets them out of the mundane of just answering call after call and having a good time and stopping cars and working together on their shift. And it seems to work out well. Like we've had a lot of success in the last eighteen months with the, with the program.
Any sense of what the, what the causes for the uptick in complaints by that amount?
That I don't know. Without diving in, which I can do, and compare from year to year, I just looked at total numbers. I don't know which specific area that's got higher complaints compared to last year, but I can definitely do. I, I don't know which specific area that's got higher complaints compared to last year, but I can definitely do that.
Yeah, I'd be curious of a breakdown of the, the complaints, you know, which, what are they for?
Yep, that's not an issue, I can pull that up. I will send that off to the city manager, he's looking forward to it.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors, uh, just to review what's been happening at the comptroller's office. We have three funded positions, one of which remains vacant, that is the finance supervisor position. Projects that are ongoing, um, obviously our staff recruitment, we're working through the twenty twenty-three health insurance renewal rates. Um, we have seen no increase in rates in twenty twenty-two, not sure twenty twenty-three will be the same. So we're trying to negotiate through that. Um, real property and utility billing, we are working through the timekeeping implementation. We've made strides on that in the last month, so we should be going live with that in some of the departments relatively soon. We're going to do a phased-in approach on that one. Um, phase two of the EFC long-term financing is also, um, starting to ramp up. So we'll be looking to close on the last piece of that debt by the end of the year. And believe it or not, um, we're already have our sights on the twenty twenty-three budget. Priorities that we have, um, within the comptroller's office currently, uh, outside of the assisting taxpayers and parties with payments and information that is contained in our office is staffing recruitment. Uh, we're really trying to add a body in that office, um, hopefully at the level of finance supervisor. And, um, working through the twenty twenty-three budget, starting that process out, uh, we will probably, not probably, we will work on water, sewer and general fund in that order. And then some of the issues that we have in the office impactful is the staffing being down. One FTE has seen, we've seen that impact on a daily basis. Um, trying to, you know, balance the expenditures in the general fund with the unknown sales tax revenue and just keeping an eye on that. So we're probably poised by the end of the year. Um, just by way of update, we've received forty-five percent of our budgeted revenue, so we're on par percentage-wise right now to collect the three million that was in the budget. Our first month of preemption, we need about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month to meet that budget. And the city collected from New York State, uh, about a hundred and ninety-six thousand in our first full month. When you add in the county's share that they'll be giving to us, that will bring us to about approximately two hundred and fifty-four thousand. Um, I did speak as a follow-up to the last meeting, um, with St. Lawrence County Treasurer Renee Cole. And the county will only be reimbursing us on a quarterly basis per their resolution. So I did make the ask to do monthly, um, but the response back was it will go in accordance with the resolution. Any questions?
Any, are we getting any takers for the, uh, for the positions, the one FTE and accounting supervisor position?
We have not yet, sir.
How, how long have we had it posted?
In excess of five months.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, um, how far along on you on the long-term financing for the sewer project? Is that, is that something that can be redone if we wrote a letter to the Environmental Facilities Corp? And said, is there any, I think it's thirteen million?
Approximately thirteen million is our final close. Um, there is specific laws that garner or that regulate that type of borrowing, so we have only so long from our first draw to make that financing permanent. So the ability to modify that at this point in time, I can look into, but I'm not sh- I wouldn't.
It seems like we'd, I mean, I've talked about this endlessly, but it seemed like we'd write a letter and explain our financial situation and how much sewer rates are going up, how much debt we have, basically that ratepayers can't afford it. Could you consider this thirteen million a grant instead of a loan? I know in the, uh, federal budget, there's funding available. Uh, a lot of money went to those, you know, for water and sewer upgrades, and it does include debt reduction. There's actually a workshop on it tomorrow at eleven, I think.
Okay.
And it's going to explain it all, but given the influx of federal money into the Environmental Facilities Corporation, it just seems like we'd be derelict in our duties if we didn't write a letter and make the request and ask for a specific, you know, timeline before you finalize it.
And I believe we have time to do such. Um, I'm not sure, we do not have a final closing schedule. We're really in the very early, early process on that thirteen million dollar portion, the nineteen-six is done. Um, so I can work through that with city manager and city planner.
We did it previously, it didn't work, they said no. Uh, we can do it again, they'll say no again. What really should happen is some members of this council should team up with some state official and head themselves to Albany and plant themselves in the EFC office with the director and work on them until they say yes. We can send one more blind letter down, but they'll say no to it, just like they said no the last.
I thought you were setting that meeting up quite a long time ago.
Well, I, no, nobody here said that they're, they're ready to go. And you need a politician, but we sent the letter, the council asked us to do it.
Go and I said, you and Angela and I could go if you wanted to.
I don't.
So let's go.
I think, I think it needs to be politically motivated.
At the time when we did that, that was early on, that was a couple of years ago.
No, we just did it last year.
And what I'm saying is with the new, uh, infrastructure bill, there's that much more money being put into these, these things. So, I mean, I, I mean, I think we should make a compelling case and try it.
I agree.
And, and go down.
Craft a second letter, let's, uh, let's get it in hand and I'm, I'm happy to go with anybody.
Once it goes out, we can take a ride down, uh, we're, ask for the meeting in the, in the letter.
Yeah, I'm in.
Lot of grants, but, uh, a lot of people want, a lot of people need, we're not the only one, so.
Well, quicker we get there, the better.
I missed your, I missed your comments on sales tax revenue to date.
So we have, we have a budget of three million, of which we've collected forty-five percent of that, approximately one point three million, it's a little over that. Um, so if we were to extrapolate the first four months of the year, um, we would be on target for the three million dollar mark. We, that's all that we had in the budget and, um, we do need two hundred and fifty thousand per month to meet budget and we have one full collection month of preempt, of the preemption sales tax amount, um, of which with the county's share will hit two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So you've gotten one payment from the county and you expect another one in June?
No, they were very specific in their resolution of when those payments would come in. They have paid nothing to the city under the current sharing agreement and I don't believe we would expect anything until, it was in, um, Ms. Cole's email to me, um, August is the first time we'll receive that and then every three months thereafter.
And August is going to be retro to?
It will represent the first sales tax quarter, which we were preempted under. So the sales tax quarter that we're working on right now is March, April, May. So a business, all the taxes are due for that quarter to New York State on June twentieth. And it takes a little bit of time for the state to reconcile and get the money out to the various municipalities. So by the county's calculation, they will be re, providing us our half of a one percent in August based on the collection months of March, April, May. So five months after we started this process.
And that one point three million to date, um, includes the county's revenue under the sharing agreement, the first January, February, March?
That is correct, so we have, uh, December, January, February was the quarter that we were paid for under the county's old six point four four percent formula. And then starting in April, we began receiving money from New York State as our own taxing authority on sales tax. There's about a two-month lag there between, um, the money coming to us in its entirety for that quarter for when taxpayers are actually paying that money in.
And the receipts from the state today, is there any, is it too early to make a comparison to when we were under the sharing agreement?
I would say yes, only because we have not yet fully collected one full quarter. I mean, we could compare cash in, cash out, I'm sorry, just cash in, um, what the county deposited versus what we've deposited. And you, if you did that, you would see a significant reduction in what the city's depositing on their own versus what we received last year under the sharing agreement.
And the figures that the county uses, uh, to determine what's in the city limits is coming from the comptroller's office?
New York State comptroller, correct. So very specific, they publish a report every time they send out a dispersment to the municipalities. It's all available, um, they can see what we receive, we can see what they receive, it's all public information if you know where to go for it. And that's what's being used to be calculated, it's certified by the state comptroller.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have, uh, our, uh, Phase Three.
Update, council, where we are, um, we received about four hundred and fifteen applications, uh, for the first round. Uh, we've been reviewing them, we're breaking them up by, uh, income demographic. Um, and then next by, uh, what the project is for. So we've tried to separate them now into basically two piles in the income demographics, those projects, critical, electrical repairs, heating repairs, uh, roofs that are, you know, leaking or broken, um, access to homes for handicap. Uh, so, uh, we're, we're going through the process now, again, there's four hundred and fifteen of them. Obviously, former applications in our first, uh, round of money will, will fund through. Uh, but I think we'll be, uh, prepared to start issuing the first round of approvals within the next, uh, ten to fourteen days. So, um, it's going to be, again, their application review process has been, been pretty extensive just because of so many. And then we'll actually go and verify information on the personal side as far as income, contribution, et cetera. And then, uh, trying to line up and ensure that, uh, there's quality contractors in place and then, and they can actually accomplish the work, uh, in a, in a timely fashion. So, so, uh, we'll have a, a, a lengthier, uh, brief in three weeks at the next council meeting because I think then we'll be, we'll be that much farther along with the, with the review process. We're continuing to take the applications, uh, kind of under a round two, uh, if you will, we've received quite a few of that. Uh, in the hopes that if we're able to replenish this, uh, at some time throughout the fiscal year or next year, we'll have, you know, that many more projects lined up and, and ready to go.
The dollar amount, the dollar amount, do the math, it works out to like twenty approvals, twenty people would benefit or?
No, well, I, again, so the projects, uh, even in the critical ones, they don't all, like, you know, go to the five thousand dollar amount. So we've got a lot of, for instance, for furnace, uh, replacements that would be in the twenty-two to twenty-three hundred dollar range. Circuit panel, uh, quotes that have been eighteen to twenty-one hundred dollars. So people that may be eligible for the full five thousand, a lot of the critical projects aren't rising to that, to that dollar amount. So I'd say right now, the average project in the critical range is somewhere around the three thousand dollar mark. So again, I'm, we're, we're just in the first round of, of sorting, uh, sorting through the applications. And then our intent really is to go through each of the three income, uh, brackets, you know, and, and pull out again those projects that, you know, based on our assessment are, are something that's, you know, causing a life, health, safety, uh, sort of a, sort of a, of an issues.
So that is a real good demonstration of need and, uh, I mean, I got on the CDBG bandwagon again, but there's a six hundred thousand dollar grant that we haven't written in several years. I believe that, uh, we certainly should write this year specifically for these types of projects and for our, our other, uh, program that Phil Cosmo talked about, that they could administer for us.
Um, we do not have any proclamations this evening. And we do not have any public hearings tonight. So this brings us to personal appearance at this time. Anyone attending in person, like the, the council, please come down to the podium, you have five minutes.
Hello, everyone. Uh, last meeting, I spoke into regards, uh, to the city attorney being utilized in my arrest, uh, for a private citizen, in my opinion. Um, the city manager stated later in the meeting when this was brought up that, uh, it was for a bona fide reason, which, when I looked that up, it would mean it had some. Can I say the boogeyman instead? I'll say the boogeyman, I, I'm sorry.
No.
I, I worked really hard to, to not use names in here, mayor. And due to you and other people ignoring me, here I am. I, I told you this last time, so you kind of caused this, you know, in my opinion. But I'm going to continue, okay? Uh, it was later brought up in the meeting, uh, and it was stated that it would need to take place in an executive session, these discussions. Uh, the boogeyman also replied to Council Powers that it is impossible for the city attorney to be used in a prosecutorial role and that what I stated was nonsense. Uh, since then, I acquired an official email on Augsburg City Letterhead. It's from the office of the city attorney to the ADA who prosecuted my case on behalf of the county. Or should I say the city? That, that's a good question. Uh, it was dated January twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Um, I'd like to note that, uh, I was arrested in May of the previous year, twenty twenty-one, so this was eight months after the arrest took place. The email reads, dear ADA, there's really a name there, but I won't say that. In interest of the judicial economy and saving the city taxpayers the expense of my office prosecuting the violation of the city ordinance by Mr. McNamara, I should be able to say my own name, hopefully. I consent to the St. Lawrence County District Attorney's Office in prosecuting this violation on behalf of the city of Augsburg. I must ask myself why the boogeyman would lie in chambers about these happenings and calling myself bringing this to light nonsense and impossible. I would have to assume the city attorney wanted nothing to do with these frivolous charges brought against me. So he decided to put the burden on the taxpayers of St. Lawrence County. Newsflash, I was found not guilty. I also must ask myself how the citizens of the county who don't reside in Augsburg would feel about the city attorney spending their tax dollars to prosecute a frivolous case for the city of Augsburg. Or, like I said in my opinion, early, earlier was for a private citizen. Uh, there was an eyewitness fabricated just weeks before the trial, once they knew I was fighting this all the way. Uh, the so-called eyewitness was interviewed the night of the so-called incident and was not an eyewitness then. However, almost a year later, he gave a statement to the OPD saying he saw me commit a crime out his window. I have proof on a desk of recorded OPD calls, which I, I had to write to obtain that information. Uh, and I have proof that this man lied on the stand. I hope as a government, governing body that you guys would look into this issue and, uh, want to do what's right. Um, I'm not looking to, uh, to go after the city by any means, like some of you sitting up there have in the past. I just think that when people are wronged, it should be made right. And, uh, if things aren't handled, handled right in law enforcement, there's a word, it's called misconduct. And you shouldn't be sitting there just saying, no, this is a legal matter, go get a lawyer, Mr. McNamara, if you want anything done about this. You should be handling it. You guys, in my opinion, are supposed to be everybody's boss. So hopefully something can be made right about this and thank you. I did my best there for you, Mike, to, uh, to not personally attack anybody. But in the past, you've said people's names, county legislators and other people up here in this chamber too. So you're, you're guilty of the same thing. You're asking me not to do. It's a violation of my First Amendment rights, sir.
So Greg, just, uh, to, to clarify, the question at hand is whether or not the city attorney was used in a legal matter.
Damn.
It's kind of like a
Really?
Traffic violation, I'm asking, because we should follow up.
Correct, what I was found guilty of is, is not even a traffic violation, it's. What I was found guilty of is not even a traffic violation, it's like a city code violation out of the code office. I would believe that the code office was involved in this, a lot of people, I've been ignored, I've tried very hard to try to find this stuff out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, other than prolong this, so Mr. McNamara was charged with trespassing?
I don't think we should be-
Mr. McNamara was charged with trespassing, which is a, excuse me, violation handled by District Attorney's Office for prosecution. He was also charged with littering in offense with the Augsburg Municipal Code. So in the interest of not having two attorneys prosecuting the same matter, the city attorney asked the District Attorney's Office to handle the littering matter while he was handling the trespassing matter. So he's not used in any way, shape or form, he wasn't an issue. We don't normally quote prosecute violations like that, where people are issued appearance tickets, they go and plead guilty or not guilty. Rarely do people plead not guilty. In this particular case, Mr. McNamara pled not guilty. Again, instead of having two municipal attorneys try in the situation, the city attorney, excuse me, asked the county attorney to handle them concurrently. The county doesn't normally handle charges and citations that are issued from the Augsburg Municipal Code, that is our responsibility to do. So that is the official manner that it was handled. Mr. McNamara was found not guilty of the trespassing, was found guilty of the littering charge.
Rick Poliak, sixteen oh four Lafayette Street. I would like to urge you to listen to Chief Kearns and do whatever you can to get that manpower up. Counselor Fisher talked about the times when we used to do narcotics investigations, the majority of our investigations were done with our personnel. Yes, we did have the county task force involved, a lot of times we had federal agents that were working alongside us. Most of the drug investigations and the success we had was with our own people. And we had protocol and processes established. We had a very proactive program that started back in the eighties, and we enhanced it through the years. And again, it was very successful. We reached out, started going for federal charges rather than state charges because it was much more effective in being a deterrent. But even Counselor Fisher will agree, when we did it, we did it with three-man minimums, and each man had a specific role during that investigation, and it was very efficient, very effective. We very seldom, very few times can I even recall ever going to trial on a drug case because we made multiple buys, we did it right by the book. The narcotics detective that was established was a result of the Cade Group, Citizens Against Illegal Drugs, wanting a full-time narcotics investigator. I talked about this in the past, we did that, and it proved to be very, very effective. The narcotics investigators responsible for developing informants, for gathering intel, utilizing it, setting up buys, and controlling a buy. Without that narcotics investigator doing that on a regular basis, your general investigator's not going to be able to handle all of that and do general investigations as well. Even as a lieutenant, I had a lieutenant, sergeant, general detective, narcotics investigator, and a juvenile detective when I was in the investigations unit, and every one of us had our own caseload. We handled everything from bad checks to murder investigations. But the narcotics primarily, narcotics investigator was his primary responsibility was to develop informants and get the narcotics investigations going, and we would bring in three guys. On occasion, yes, we'd bring in uniformed officers, if we needed a female officer to do a search on an informant or whatever, we would bring in an officer. And if a patrol officer developed an informant of their own, we would let them come in on the investigation, on the actual buy, so they could get an understanding of the process and be prepared that someday down the road, maybe they would be in investigations and doing this. I know money's tight, I went through tough budgets when I was the chief, there were times we couldn't fill positions, we had to run with what we had. I just urge you to support Chief Kearns and give him the manpower to keep on doing what we've been doing for the last forty years. You said yourself that there's a drug house on almost every corner in the city of Augsburg. Well, without a proactive narcotics investigation program, it's gonna get nothing but worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, I am Michael Thule, I live at two fourteen Hamilton Street, and as a citizen, I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I apologize, most of my comments are not as timely as I would have liked, but the April twenty-fifth meeting was canceled and I was out of town on May nine, and I wanted to make these comments publicly in person to you. First, I comment on Mayor Skelly's letter, which was posted at the city's website following the April eleventh city council meeting. One of our three comments about the city's fund balance at previous meetings. I stated the information I shared about fund balances mentioned in the Financial Restructuring Board Report of June twenty nineteen, and I specifically mentioned the fund balance benchmark of the Government Finance Officers Association. I did not research the issue further. Mayor Skelly's letter makes it clear, I should have done more research on the topic before offering comments to city council. This falls on me. The G F O A website notes at times municipality faces unique circumstances when it justifies achieving fund balance beyond its benchmark. I concur, the city of Augsburg faces such circumstances, and I thank Mayor Skelly for sharing this information in his letter. I still maintain that the improving accumulation of fund balance the past two years, which continued the trend of general fund balance increase that began in twenty seventeen, could have been forecast two years ago, and demonstrates the city in the past two years could have honored the public safety contracts, significantly increased its fund balance while adopting a ten percent cut in the tax rate in twenty twenty-one. Next, while I do not participate in social media, someone shared with me comments that appeared to reference me, issued by the city manager shortly after the April eleventh city council meeting. Some observations. First, I do not believe I ever stated the city was not facing fiscal stresses these past years. A quick review, some of which will be a repeat of discussion items at your last meeting. At the end of twenty sixteen, the general fund balance was six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, after having expenses exceed revenue by three million dollars the prior four years. To reverse this trend, the city significantly increased its tax rate in twenty seventeen by thirteen point three percent, which resulted in an increase in fund balance in each succeeding year, but created the problem of encroachment on the constitutional tax limit. This action made the city eligible for review by the Financial Restructuring Board, and the city council, city management concurrence, applied for the review, which resulted in the board's June twenty nineteen report. The approach by the current city council to address fiscal stresses has been more aggressive than that at the prior city council. I believe both councils had the same long-term goal, fiscal stability with a reduction in property taxes, the pace and methods to achieve dramatically different. As I've stated previously, I do not support the approach this council has taken and may take to achieve its goals. I think a majority of voters in the city believes, and I do, based on the overwhelming support counselors Kennedy, Powers, and Scampoli received in their reelection to city council last November. Two, to clarify any misconception, I believe the city is being served well by city comptroller Angela Gray and her firm. Personally, I enjoy reading her reports and listening to her presentations to city council. Any comments or suggestions I make about city finances or question I pose are not intended to impugn her integrity or on the quality of her work. Philosophically, I continue to prefer the city directly employ its city manager, but it is not because of the quality of Angela's work for the city. Three, the city manager states my quote, "smooth-talking civilized tone," close quote, in addressing city council and the public is intended to be intentionally deceptive. Since I began to take more active interest in city government two years ago, I have tried to be balanced in addressing you. When you have taken actions of importance that I agree with, I have stated so publicly. When I pose questions or offer alternatives to issues city council faces, I have done so in a respectful manner. It's sad that courtesy, civility, and respect in my manner of speaking to you, my elected representatives, and to the public is ridiculed by the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Is anyone who's only attended?
The first individual is registered as Scott Sargent, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted, sir.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Scott Sargent, and I live at fourteen Academy Place in Augsburg. I appreciate the opportunity to address council here tonight, and would just like to briefly speak about our current staffing in our police department and in regards to moving the drug enforcement officer back to patrol. I would like to preface by saying that I have zero ties to the police department in regards to my family, nor have I ever. I'm speaking as a taxpaying citizen who supports safety and services. Have, however, experienced firsthand the benefits of contact with our narcotics detective, and unfortunately, I have needed it often. I've always been treated with nothing but professionalism by the members of our department, so in this matter, I'm gonna defer to them and to Chief Kearns. Just like changing a light bulb doesn't make me an electrician, and blowing out a candle doesn't make me a firefighter, watching crime TV doesn't make me a police officer, I can't imagine what they do every day, especially with the obvious infestation and drugs and drug-related crimes in our city. They're trying to do a job with already limited resources, and I absolutely respect their opinion in this matter. Simply put, all the best plans of revitalization and resurgence of this city, the city I live in and have lived in for more than fifty years, will be nonexistent with the continuing cuts to our fire department and police department, and to think otherwise is unrealistic. Let's let the professionals, the ones actually doing the job, do their jobs. Chief Kearns has spoken here tonight. Real and true leaders and city representatives need to be willing to listen more than they talk or post on social media. There's a reason we were born with two ears and only one mouth. Thanks.
Is there anyone else?
The next individual is registered as Ian Loffler, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted.
Can you hear me, Kathy?
Yes, I can.
I wanted to address the same thing that Rick did and that Mr. Sargent did, we need the drug detectives. You guys have gotta do whatever you've gotta do to give Chief Kearns the amount of staffing he needs. If you don't, this town's infested now. What's it gonna be? And it's true, Mr. Jelly, he stated in the Utica paper, there's drug houses on every corner. You know this. Mayor Skelly, you know this, and every single person on that council knows this. But yet, okay, we're gonna hear, we don't have the money, we don't have the money. Have you applied for any grants? Are there any grants out there to fund more police officers? Several years back, not really that many years, Senator Schumer approached the Obama administration and got money for up in this area because it was designated as a high drug trafficking area. Has anybody approached anybody in higher government to help them? They were approached before and they helped, why not attempt it now? There's drug OD after drug OD, death after death, and now we have one, one detective. It's not just a drug problem either. I can remember not long ago, Chief Kearns giving his report, and he broke down the crimes and the number of crimes in the city of Augsburg. Nineteen rapes in the city of Augsburg, nineteen. And now you have one drug detective, you have one detective, no drug detective. That kind of crime combined with a drug, seriously, you guys won't finance or find the money to give us the police officers and detectives we need to keep this city safe? It's just amazing to me, absolutely amazing. What's it gonna take? Too many people are dying. And another question I have for you guys, which I know I won't get an answer to right now, what happens now? What happens to all these ongoing drug investigations? Do they stop? Do they end? Who picks up the slack for this? Who continues to investigate it? So if no one, there's all that time, money, and energy that's being thrown down the toilet to try to clean this town up. I think an answer needs to be given to the public about that. Where do these drug investigations go now? I don't know, I just hope to God, just open your eyes, go into these neighborhoods, talk to the people that live here, listen to what they go through day after day after day with the drug activity. Listen to, just listen to the people for once. This isn't fear, this isn't fiction, it's reality. It's reality in the city of Augsburg. You know, come on, guys, this is nuts. I guess all I finally gotta say is please, 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 do the right thing. Give this police force what they need. Stop the OD, stop the deaths. Do I think that the cops and the city are going to completely get rid of this problem? No, I don't, but they're a deterrent. No police officers in this city is going to be holy hell. By not having a drug detective and a fully operational police department, you're just putting out a welcome mat for more of these guys to come up from the city, and more of that crap to be on the streets, and more people to die. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
The next individual is registered as Jason Bouchard, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted, sir. Mr. Bouchard has, oh, dropped off, he's back. Jason Bouchard, can you hear me, sir? It appears you are self-muted. Mayor, would you like me to continue and circle back to Mr. Bouchard?
Yeah, please.
Okay. The next individual is registered as Josh Schick, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted, Josh.
Hi, everyone.
Sir, we can hear you.
Thank you, Kathy. My name is Josh Schick, I'm here to speak as a representative of C S E A, but I am not a resident of the city of Augsburg. If it's necessary, wave rules, I'd request that, if not, I'll keep going. Thank you, Mr. Powers. Like I said, I'm a representative of C S E A, which represents employees throughout the city of Augsburg, just here tonight to talk about the employees at the wastewater treatment plant to which C S E A is representative. We're concerned over the potential for outsourcing of the important work our members do for the city at the wastewater treatment plant. I understand that you're all in early processes in the phases of this, and it might never happen, understood. But as someone who represents several of these facilities across upstate New York, I must encourage you to maintain municipal operations of your facility. Having ownership over the most important resource in water is of the utmost importance. Under the current format, right pairs have the opportunity to speak with all of you if they have issues. Nothing can compare with this type of accountability, and many municipalities who have outsourced or privatized this work over the past few decades have actually turned back towards public ownership through a process called remunicipalization. Last part, I would ask of you all to talk with our members at the facility and understand how professional they are. Their opinion should matter greatly. Their opinion should matter greatly as to how the service is delivered to the ratepayers and how they could be impacted. Our members go above and beyond every day to make sure ratepayers get the service that they pay for. They adapt to new challenges and they solve many problems on the job without anybody ever hearing about it. It's just something that has come from their decades of experience to this community. Again, I understand that this was something the city was looking into and some counselors who even voted to seek dank out for a proposal, you know, voiced their concerns in opposition to outsourcing. But again, please do not forget about our members and your employees who have served this community for decades. Lastly, I would just like to say CSEA stands ready to work with the city and all of you counselors to encounter these challenges that we both mutually face. It is not lost on CSEA. Thank you all. Thanks for your time.
Anyone?
The next individual is registered as Jason Bouchard and I will unmute that individual now. Appears you are self muted, sir. Mr. Bouchard, appears your line is open, can you hear me?
I hear you, Kathy, are you there?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Excellent, thank you, sorry for that. Good evening, Council, obviously Jason Bouchard, three one four Oak Street, President of IFF seventeen ninety-nine. Looking at over tonight's agenda, the items for council action certainly grabbed my attention. These items are nothing more than the manager's worthy way of asking council support for his violations of our contract. These resolutions seem unnecessary because the city manager has already taken the illegal actions he's asking council to approve. Each resolution constitutes nothing more than the opinion of the city manager, not an illegal opinion presented to council, which he will not allow, not the binding ruling of an arbitrator, which he consistently tries to avoid, but the opinion of a man who has repeatedly admitted both privately and publicly that he was brought here to challenge, AKA violate, our contract. The relationship between this administration and our union has been irreparably damaged by this manager. It now appears the manager would like this council to share in the blame. I'd caution council not to take the bait. First, concerning minimum staffing, we stand by our argument that this was negotiated by both parties as a safety clause. If the city disagrees, we should follow the five to zero appellate court decision and move to arbitration, not intentionally delaying it in hopes of a promised deal. However, there are a few issues for concern within this proposal. The city manager claims to affirm that four personnel is the minimum to adequately comply with the two in, two out industrial standards on minimal staffing. In the very next breath, he admits to only budgeting overtime and resources to three personnel. This begs the following questions. Did the city manager intentionally underfund our department? Did the city manager adequately inform council of his budgeted plans to move us to three? Did the city manager discuss safety ramifications of such a move with council and the public? What fire chief would craft a budget that undermines the safety of the men he is supposed to lead? Is it the opinion of our union that the manager purposely misled council with an underinflated overtime budget of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which has been exhausted by May in an effort to have council eventually force us to work below safety standards, certainly blaming you all? The other item from the manager's office this evening concerns itself with hazard pay. On April first of this year, claiming both inability to hire and inability to pay, the city manager issued an emailed press release that he would unilaterally be withholding half of this contractual obligation. Similar to my comments regarding minimum staffing, council should be concerned with the mixed messaging of this proposal. First, the manager has repeatedly stated how he has quote, successfully reduced organizational staffing within the fire department to where it needs to be, end quote. Yet in the next breath claims he cannot hire anyone. Claiming that this administration is in the business of ever hiring any firefighters without direction from a legal authority or receipt of the safer grant is laughable. Your actions tell a much different story. Second comes the claim of inability to pay and even more mixed messaging here. The hazard pay clause has been present in our contract long before you guys arrived. The financial ramifications of the staffing violations in terms of hazard pay costs are easily calculable and should have been properly presented and budgeted for. Prior to this administration, our union never collected one dollar of hazard pay. In fact, we have waived it numerous times. Pardon us for not waiving it for a group openly violating our agreement. Also, the ability to pay argument falls flat while boasting to the media about undeniable financial progress while creating lucrative positions for quote retired employees and granting additional pay raises to other units they didn't negotiate for. In this case, the manager and the union have a clear disagreement on contract interpretation, which is the exact reason arbitration exists. We invite him to meet us there. Since his arrival in twenty twenty, in July of twenty twenty, the city manager has admitted time and again of the direction and objectives he was given by council when he arrived. There is little question that the manager made promises to certain members of council that he would use every tool at his disposal, legal or otherwise, to break our union and force us to deal with he and this group. He has issued countless quote offers combined with a heavy dose of public shame to achieve his task. He has failed. As union president, I have stated this countless times in interviews with the media, via letters to the editor, via email, via telephone calls, via multiple unanimous no confidence votes, and also in person to the manager himself. And now I am stating it to you, seven members of council and all of those in attendance. Augsburg firefighters will never come to any agreement with this city manager or anyone who supports his violations of this contract, ever. I think it would behoove this council and more importantly, all of Augsburg, if this administration refocused the same amount of energy it has to dismantling our union to progressive revenue building endeavors such as attracting businesses, creating jobs and mending the countless fractured relationships that this administration has left in its wake. That would indicate the beginning of a true revival. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Well, this brings us to correspondence, do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
No, we're at consent agenda. Uh, the claims is numbering general funds. General fund warrant, number zero nine dash twenty twenty-two, an amount of nine hundred eleven thousand, return thirty-seven dollars and five cents. Library warrant, number zero nine dash twenty twenty-two, the amount of zero dollars. Capital fund warrant, number zero nine dash twenty twenty-two, the amount of seventy-nine thousand, five hundred forty-two dollars and one cent. Community development fund warrant, number zero nine dash twenty twenty-two, amount of one thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. Community renewal fund warrant, number zero nine dash twenty twenty-two, the amount of zero dollars. As audited, be insane hereby our order page, I so moved.
I'll second it.
Kathy, did you please call and roll?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabah?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Rees?
Yes.
Counselor Scampaly?
Yes.
Approved.
Uh, do not have any appointments. So this brings us to the end of our council action. Our first item of business will be read by City Manager Stephen Jolly.
A resolution instructing the city manager to continue hazard pay to the employees of the fire department represented by IFF Local one seven nine nine in the amount of three dollars per hour.
I'll move that for discussion.
I'll second it.
Um, my first question is, it seems like these are contractual and legal. So why, why is this being, why is it on the agenda? Why aren't we meeting an executive session on it?
Because it is contractual and it, it is a contract that is existent and it's out there in the public already. So that, it's in the contract, that's why we're talking about it.
But that's the purpose of executive session is we've already negotiated or someone else did. Current or pending litigation and this could lead specifically says both of them do litigation. So we should be discussing it in executive session. I'd make a motion to go to executive session, discuss these. If we have any action, we can just come out of it.
They both require action when we come up. But you certainly can move to executive session for discussion, but they both will require public action to pass or fail the resolutions.
I mean, I'm.
I don't think, I don't think it needs to go into executive session. I don't think it's actually a legal resolution with a, with a, with an existing contract. You know, you're looking at potential violations of the Taylor law. You're looking at additional issues for anybody who chooses to support this. Could be, uh, from a legislative vote, could be targeted for, um, litigation.
Is it not Taylor?
All the more reason to discuss it in executive session and make a decision after you've thought about it and had an opportunity to talk about all these things and then, then vote on it afterwards, don't you think?
I mean, I guess.
I'll, I'll do it either way, but I mean, it's, 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 go to page thirteen or fifteen of their contract. It's, it's, it's already public, but.
I guess I just.
I'll go.
I mean, we have, they have an existing contract, so we might as well, I don't understand why we're going to cut it down. Like just if their contract says they're two days and pay them what their contract says. I don't understand why we just continue to keep violating what has already been established.
So is there a second?
Do you have a second? Steve, did you want to do a second for executive session?
If you want to executive session, we'll go to executive session.
Yeah.
Not only that, but you know, if you want to go into executive session, that's all well and good. But I mean, why not, why not potentially have an attorney as present, uh, or one of the labor attorneys that are arguing? I'm sorry, did I intercede again?
No, I was agreeing with you, I, that was my second question.
You know, I mean, why, why don't we have an attorney present to discuss this if we're going to discuss in the executive session? I surely love to hear from any attorney that would support breaching a contract to, uh, uh, in a legislative format to go forward and.
Honestly, I think you should really abstain, you know, being, you be representative. But we have a second, let's do, uh, order plate.
That's laughable.
Counselor Kennedy?
I mean, I, I don't think it's necessary, but out of respect for gentlemen, I'm fine with going to executive session.
That's a yes?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Rees?
Yes.
Counselor Scampaly?
Uh, no, I just shouldn't have an attorney there.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabah?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yep.
Approved.
So Kathy, am I to log out?
No, no, sir, I'm, I'm coming back to you. No, sir, you will need to leave the room that you are presently located in, physically located in. And Counselor Kennedy, I understand, is going to call your cell phone. But you need to leave this meeting active, sir, or you will be disconnected.
Thank you, dear.
Certainly.
They might be a while, but I won't be part of their conversation.
And you call him everybody's shot off that.
I didn't realize they had that power over people.
Well, by the way, they figured out how to get twenty fifth and sixth grade softball players because that'd be fantastic.
Fantastic.
Just, just accept.
Yes.
I'll take what I can get.
Your first and second graders seem pretty good.
I run those first and second grade baseball kids straight up.
Hey, Donna, look at your phone. I was just instructed to tell you to look at your phone.
Me? Do you?
Yes.
It's quite a quick.
You got the other question for you, Bob, Steve?
I don't think you just have to redo it, right? You can have a break is.
Right. Because I didn't seem to be every other time I was left.
I think you're right. It is every day.
And if that's the case, I don't think I'm too interested, but, but I just wanted to check, because if I have to fill out the paperwork. Yeah, that's fine. That'll be another flight, but let's see the year or the. Okay, thanks. I just, I keep forgetting.
No, I'm glad you brought it up. I think it would probably pop up on my Outlook calendar anyhow, but in any event, I will make a note of that.
I might. Fill it in?
Fill, right. You got it.
So. I think Nicole and I did it one last time. I'm not sure.
What?
Fill out your time slots basically.
You got the actual form?
Yes, okay.
So there you go.
There you go.
I pull out with that. Let the record reflect, reflect that everyone's back from executive session and I remember where we were. We had.
I think there's a resolution on the table that's made and seconded.
That, that is correct.
And can you read that? What it was to go to executive session and not.
No, no, no. Prior to that, Counselor Reish moved a resolution instructing the city manager to continue to pay hazard pay to the employees of the fire department represented by I A F F Local seventeen ninety-nine in the amount of three dollars per hour, and Counselor Scampaly seconded it.
I think this will resolve itself over time. There's a lot of people that don't like the fact that there's a clause in the firefighters' union contract that, you know, pays them this extra money as hazard pay, even, you know, even if there's four people on a shift, but it's something's got to be addressed in future contract. I, I don't want to spend the money on attorney fees. So I, you know, it's, it's somewhat ambiguous and I guess our attorney's saying it's not a slam dunk, so I'm just going to vote no and we'll just pay the, whatever the contract says and whatever.
Call the roll.
Mayor, for my input, I just disagree. I put this resolution forward. We have been paying the three dollars hazard pay since the fire staffing dropped to five on each shift. When it dropped below that, we were paying the six dollars until such time that it is impossible for us to meet this clause because there are no certified candidates on the, on the eligible list. So I think that it's smart business for the city to continue to battle this contract. The only thing this contract clause has in common with hazard is the word hazard in it. This has nothing to do with the number of people on duty when they're fighting a fire active. This has to do with holding the city to hiring a certain number of people. It's not a hazard clause, and it would be a waste of taxpayer funds, in my opinion, to continue paying additional money beyond three dollars.
Thanks for your opinion. And then that, you know, at the end of the day, we're the, we're the policymakers and we're going to be the ones that yea and nay it. So call the roll. The point order.
You're on. You're ready. So we're voting on our first resolution.
Yep.
To, are we voting on an amendment? Is that right?
No, sir.
That was the second one that I talked about.
So Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Reish?
No.
Counselor Scampaly?
No.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy? No. Denied.
Our next item of business will be raised by City Manager Stephen Jolly.
A resolution instructing the city manager and fire chief to maintain daily minimum staffing at or below four personnel at the fire department as indicated by the personnel and funds available in the approved 2022 city budget.
Make that motion for discussion purposes. So, Ken? I'd like to offer a resolution, if I may, for your consideration. So, here, I'll pass it out. This is to amend the existing resolution.
I don't know if there's any way that can be forwarded to me in any quick fashion.
I'll take a picture of it, Mike, and I can text it to you.
So the amended resolution, read as follows. A resolution instructing the city manager to maintain daily minimum staffing at the fire department at four I A F F members. Whereas the city of Arginsburg, New York, and the I A F Local seventeen ninety-nine are parties to a collective bargaining agreement that is effective during the period January one 2020 through December thirty-one twenty-five. Whereas Article eighteen, Section E, the collective bargaining agreement states a minimum of five bargaining unit employees, four firefighters plus one officer, or three firefighters plus two officers shall be on duty at all times unless otherwise mutually agreed to in writing for the period of this contract. Whereas effective one January twenty-one, the daily minimum staffing was established at four personnel where it remains to date. Whereas the city, in I A F F Local seventeen ninety-nine, awaited decision from the New York State Court of Appeals that may result in the need to go to binding arbitration. And whereas the present fire chief affirms that four personnel minimum daily staffing is adequate and allows for safe fire ground operations that comply with all mandatory staffing laws, i.e. OSHA two in, two out. And whereas this is not an approved, there is not an approved civil service list at this time to hire additional firefighters. Now therefore be it resolved, the city manager is hereby instructed to continue to maintain daily minimum staffing at four I A F F members at the fire department until the civil service list is available and/or the city is approved for the safer grant through FEMA. And be it further resolved that the city manager is hereby instructed to continue the legal action in the Court of Appeals. And be it further resolved that. And be it further resolved that city manager is hereby instructed to seek a resolution from the city council after the Court of Appeals decision that will determine how the city will proceed based on the outcome of that decision. I so move.
I'll second.
Kathy, would you call the roll?
Mayor's discussion.
Right, yeah.
So the contract calls for five personnel minimum staffing. So we we are staffing for twenty twenty-one at four minimum. Uh, with the twenty twenty-two budget, our staffing has four personnel assigned to each shift. Minimum staffing is four. Uh, I'm on the record multiple occasions, as is President Bouchard complaining on multiple occasions to the news media after the budget briefing that the budget contained only enough people to maintain minimum staffing of three personnel. I think that's been well documented and clear. So any notion that council wasn't made aware, deceived, etc., is all is all just preposterous fiction talk. The question for the council is, do we continue in that manner? I have not dropped the staffing below four at this point. The overtime budget is not extremely over, uh, as as may have just been indicated. In fact, we're right about a target for overtime. But we are using overtime to maintain four. The budget with the number of personnel, four people on a shift, implies that we'll have at least one person off, and the daily minimum staffing is three. I don't believe we can sustain four personnel assigned to a shift with four personnel minimum staffing. Very similar to what we just talked about in the police department. At some point in time, we can't keep doing what we were doing without the resources to do it. So while the firefighters' union, in particular President Bouchard, has enjoyed, you know, creating some drama and fiction around this, I'm actually trying to bring the council's attention to the exact point. If we're going to maintain four, we can't do that with just four people assigned to a shift. There will have to be more resource. If council continues to support the budget that was passed, three is generally what we're going to be able to support on a daily basis. So I'm advocating, as I have been. I gave the council a very detailed brief on what optimal staffing looked like, what reduced staffing looked like, and what, uh, the minimal acceptable level of staffing was in the budget. We had multiple presentations on this. You funded the budget at the level that you funded it at. So I'm asking council tonight, because we are preparing, uh, potentially for the Court of Appeals to accept this case, will incur more legal costs to the city. If there does not appear to be appetite amongst the council to continue that battle, we should make that decision now. Otherwise, we should just affirm what we're doing. So I just want to call, Council Reese's, uh, modification is similar to mine. No, no issue there, but that does still maintain the the battle versus a five personnel minimum or four.
Correct. So still a violation of the contract. In my opinion.
Yep.
You said if you need to amend the budget, because, I mean, it was your budget. If we didn't put enough in there for hazard pay and for overtime based on the personnel that we had or the personnel that we could get, then bring a resolution forward. We have fund balance, and we'll. Address it this year, and we'll address it next year or next year's budget. And by then, the Court of Appeals decision will be made, and, uh, it would be nice to resolve some of these things, and, uh.
The Court of Appeals decision, as I've explained on a couple of occasions, Counsel, I just think that you want to hear what you want to hear, but the Court of Appeals decision will simply direct us to go to arbitration. It'll simply go to arbitration.
I'm, it will if we decide it will.
Decide what?
It will if we decide that it goes to arbitration.
That's what I'm asking you. Decide now.
It's right in there in the resolution.
So again, if you're voting to continue, as Counselor Scampelli just said, to continue violating the contract, so be it. I'm just looking for guidance from council. What do you want to do?
And 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 here it is, and we'll vote on it.
There you go.
Sarah, Sarah Purdy sat up here, previous city manager, and, you know, pleaded with counselors, and they never gave her direction either, so.
Just just on an aspect to this, and and with respect to Counsel Reese sharing his amendment, which I I see strengthens the, uh, the fire department to an extent, in my opinion, still violates contract and and, uh. I I won't be supporting the amended president or the, uh, the amended resolution if it's a new resolution.
And just to correct you, Mike, on December sixth, if you look at the minutes, uh, I supported putting the twenty on, so we had five per shift sports contract. Clear in the minutes, clear in the minutes, and it was clear that I stated twenty men gives you a budget of sixty-three thousand dollars, I think it was, or sixty-six less than what was in there. So don't say that we never gave advice. I threw my two cents in, didn't pass. That's the way it is. We don't want to sit around and do nothing. We didn't do it under Sarah. We didn't do it now, so.
Yes.
We look at it, clean this damn air, slander all you want, but it's all not.
But the. How how did five, how does twenty fire?
Because we, because we have to pay you overtime. It's it's, I brought it up, you have the chart. Steve Jolly, send us the chart.
And you won't be paying hazard duty. And we won't be paying hazard duty either.
I mean.
So i- i- if you vote a five and you have twenty, you're in the same situation we are now with sixteen. You can't, you can't maintain four per shift with sixteen, and you can't maintain five with twenty.
It's.
You gotta have twenty-four, twenty-eight.
It's because we're not paying overtime.
It's still the same problem, though. If you increase the shift staffing to five, and then you increase the minimum staffing to five, you still have the same problem you have now with four.
You do. You still got the overtime.
It's the same problem.
You still got the overtime and 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 some hazard pay.
But the difference is, is if you put five on a shift, and that's what they're asking for, maybe they would waive the hazard pay and work with the city. If we were giving them, maybe they would raise the have rate, waive the hazard.
Were the numbers, and they were presented to us by the city manager, and it was clearly indicated that sixty-three thousand dollars less anticipated than what was budgeted for, and the budget's still underfunded. I mean, we had, we had a a conversation on December sixth, and we're going, and it's right in the minutes, right in the minutes.
Right now, you're giving every fireman twelve thousand dollars a year hazard pay.
No, you.
Then you're giving him twelve thousand dollars a year.
Because you got the fire department.
I'm I'm not giving it to them. You're the one that never drew any revenue.
I said, let's bring it to twenty.
We've been on two years, and and you were on a long time.
The resolution.
Go here. Holy cow.
Problem is revenue.
Let's hold it. Let's hold it. It violates.
Not enough money. Why don't you come up with an idea for money? We worked on sales tax.
All right.
Property tax. That that helps. That helps.
And sort of all of it.
You didn't start on any of that.
Okay.
I I was there at the meeting, and I saw it at one. I never saw you again.
Okay.
Man, let's go.
So, uh.
We're voting on the resolution.
So we voting, do we have a second?
On the amendment.
This amended?
On the amendment. Right?
This is a, this is a motion to amend.
Yeah.
First of all. Would you like me to call the roll, Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scampelli?
Obstein.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
No.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy? Obstein. It should be at five. Counselor Powers?
Obstein.
Denied.
Bill, we, uh, Bill, that will end the court, the legal court, everything, if you do that.
Mayor, point of order, the 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 modification was voted down, not the resolution itself.
So can you call roll on the resolution, please?
Counselor Scampelli?
Was the original resolution moved?
Yes, sir, it was moved. It was moved by Counselor Reese and seconded by Counselor Scampelli.
Thank you.
Counselor Scampelli?
No.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy? No. Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Reese?
No.
Denied.
So this brings us to old business, and we'll begin with City Manager Stephen Jolly.
You've all gotten your packet, the results of the survey. Which day of the week would you prefer to see hall to be closed to the public?
I'm not going to talk again, if there's any more offers to be asked. That's, no, I don't want to do that. I want, I want quiet, no.
What happened?
It's Andy.
Arlene, I do welcome you to the podium, though, appearance, citizen participation.
So Counselors, in your packets is the results of the survey. Which day of the week would you prefer to see hall to be closed to the public? Uh, forty-four percent Friday, thirty-five percent Wednesday, nine point two percent Tuesday, seven point six percent Monday, and three percent on Thursday.
And. Do you have enough tea on the beach?
So we're about halfway through our testing. Um, all of our tests prior to the storm have been well below the threshold, single digits. Uh, we'll get, uh, one of the the next benchmarks for us, other than the next four weeks of of just normal random tethered, uh, day or weekly testing, uh, will be to test five days straight post a storm. Uh, so we'll do that, and we should have the results this week. I feel confident that our normal readings, because they've been good, I think, I don't see any conditions where they'll stay. And again, we'll wait, uh, post the storm, uh, to determine what what impact that may have had on the beach.
Is there, uh, anticipated opening date?
Well, same, uh, same plans last year. The Fourth of July weekend will be our 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 goal, Counsel, and I hope, again, within the next two weeks, we'll have all of our information submitted, uh, to the Health Department once we have our final testing done. Uh, we've been working with them right along any to the other benchmarks to make sure that that we're there. So I think the last piece we'll be waiting to submit is that we'll submit the final package. I hope we'll have a good two, uh, three weeks gap, um, between the last testing and when we would plan to open.
What's the estimated, or if you can get it to us, the estimated cost, um, that's going to be to get this up and running?
Yes, we don't have, uh, we did most of our startup costs, as you recall.
Last year.
Last year, yeah. So but and we've budgeted this year, and the budget will split some of the lifeguard staff up, but we we budgeted all that. Uh, some of the costs we will have, uh, again, will be probably the catch-up mowing the grass. Uh, and again, if if we are, um, uh, successful in being able to open, then I think we'd immediately be asking council to, uh, to charter, again, the engineer work to move forward to look at handicap access and compliance.
Okay, that was my next question.
Did we get the OBP?
Yes, and the OBP is, uh, signed off on our lease agreement for the beach. Expect that this week.
Send it for old business, then?
Uh, old business, I just, uh. One of the callers brought up, uh, Ann Lachler. In fact, uh, good question. What happens to the current drug investigations if we do, in fact, drop a narcotics detective right now?
So I I'd ask council, again, we've, at the next meeting, is our plan to lay out similar courses of action for decision like we've done tonight with the fire department. Uh, I'll have all those answers then. I mean, again, in in the interim period here, you know, Mark will work to close things out or get them where they need to be. Certainly, we'll we'll work on all the cases we have. Again, this is, we're not getting rid of the positions, not being abolished. We just have to keep people in patrol cars. Nine, uh, to ten people trying to run twenty-four-seven ops is not, is not working. And it's, and and two personnel on duty here on the night shift is not not a safe way for us to operate. So, uh, the next city council meeting, we'll have, uh, a detailed brief and resolutions for council considerations similar to the fire department. Thanks, man.
I, a quick question on your comment there, um, y- as far as closing out investigations or or, I mean, we're not looking to streamline anything to to get it off the docket to be able to do this. I mean, obviously, it's it's a significant issue in the city. It needs to be addressed, and investigations are continually ongoing and constant. You know, so I, you know, I I don't understand what aspect of it would be, he'd be closing down other than maybe some simple possession ones. Maybe you can clarify?
I think we're better prepared to answer in a couple of weeks, but I I would, when I say we've got to some point, close out the work he's doing now to to put him where we we need him to work. So it's going to be a process. It's not, none of this is going to be easy, but again, I'm. I don't know if there's disagreement on council or someone should tell me between now and then, we'll put the proposal together, but we've, we've got to keep the bodies in the patrol cars. I'm, no, nobody, uh, in the city staff, the police chief, none of us are are blind. We receive the calls every day, the issues with drugs, the 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 quadruple increase in what appears to be burglaries and break-ins. Uh, we've got to keep the patrols, uh, on the road, and quite frankly, we've got to increase the number of patrols on the road at night. Two is, two is not accurate. We've got to get to three. Three's not great, but it's, we got to get to three before we can get to four. So I'm simply trying to get the number of patrols and and maintain consistency, as Mark said.
I I agree with you. We need the patrols. I mean, you said there's an academy coming up. We should probably look at hopping on that bandwagon because it's needed, and Chief Kearns has been, I I feel he's been very thorough and professional. When he's approached council, he has come with. Answers. He's come with answers to our questions. He's been prompt about getting us responses, and I don't feel like what he's asking for is, you know, over the moon. He's literally coming for the nuts and bolts to run his department. He's not coming in asking for Cadillacs to drive around in the patrol cars.
I guess, I guess, just assuming what's troubling to me, I guess, at the end of the day, was this presentation at the end of the year last year, come budget time. Uh, with with the volume of work that his investigators and patrolmen and and everybody are doing, and and to 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 be dealing with this mid-season, right at the, right at the height of our nicest weather in in the community, is just going to increase, uh, volume here, and and it's. One of the reasons why I didn't support the budget.
Can, can anyone come up with some ideas to pay for it? We all want it.
How long does?
How are we going to pay for it?
I mean, you you cut our biggest revenue stream by twenty percent.
What's that?
Tax it.
So I don't know. How long can someone?
Because the taxes, we're driving everybody out of the city. There's been, there's been population growth all outside the city.
Now the drugs will drive people out of the city.
Problem with the drugs is the drug reform, because they 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 know more than get arrested, and they're back on the street, and they're arrested three times for the math, and they're, and they're, they're, yeah. So that's where you want to attack. Maybe maybe the trip to Albany, you stop in there, too.
Yeah.
Bail, more bail reform than it is drug reform.
Yeah. Easy, do away with it.
Is there a maximum amount of time someone's can be on disability before, how does that work? I don't even, you know, how that operates.
In the police department, no, sir. And and these are, the, these are, all these are injuries we expect to recover. I mean, they're working through the system. This isn't, uh.
He said not two, not till next year.
Well, again, I I don't think it's good for Mark and I to predict what medically is going to happen. Two of these individuals, for instance, we we thought would have been back by now based on initial prognosis, and and it just didn't, uh, it didn't develop that way medically. So I I don't, I don't think it's good for us to continue to speculate, but but none of them are. At this point, to our knowledge, are career-ending injuries that were, we have people sitting there, they're waiting. This, this is just a matter of, I mean, these are serious, there were serious injuries that require, you know, time to to heal. Uh, one may require another, another surgical procedure, so it's. It's, 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 it's a difficult, and I don't, you know, I think this topic, uh, it's. You know, the whole notion that everybody is is at odds about this. I don't, I think what the mayor just said was best. Nobody disagrees that we need more, more of, we need more resources thrown at this drug issue and and the and the secondary crimes that are taking place as a result of people seeking. To steal things, to sell them for money, etc. So I I don't think anybody disagrees with that. The the real challenge for this council has been, how do we pay for it? And and Counselor Scampelli, to your, to your point, of course, the revenue stream of the property tax is cut, but, I mean, again, we say that without the second sentence, it says we did it for a reason, which was to, which was to remove the very close proximity that we've been warned on multiple occasions by the state of the constitutional tax on us. So I mean, I, it isn't that any of this has been done because somebody had an agenda to do it with no reason. There, there were reasons for all these. The question now is, how do we pay for it? We've had a couple of better years, for sure, by way of sales tax. Because of some of the money we harnessed, we're in good position to pay down some previous debts that have been, uh, trailing us. Be prepared to invest some money in some things that will potentially grow revenue, but they're not overnight, uh, revenue generators. We're not going to, you know, strike gold tomorrow and have money flowing in, so all all these things are going to take time. So. It really is the challenge for council to roll up their sleeves and figure out how how do we afford it, uh, if if we want to put more resources out there, or what else do we do without? If if the decision is, let the police department be staffed exactly where the chief recommends, and I would agree, by the way. Mark's presentations have been succinct. They've been professional, and they're without bias or drama, and and I couldn't say that Rob Westcott ever made one that that wasn't the same either. I thought they were always on.
No, I wasn't insinuating that. I was just saying that I trusted his.
No, no, I'm just. And I'm just saying, I, Rob's presentations were good as well. The decisions have been made based on on, and I I didn't sense when, at Rob Westcott's presentation or Mark Kearns' presentation, I didn't sense any member of council not wanting to fund to the penny what he asked for. I didn't, I didn't get that at all. Uh, nor was there ever any intention by me to water down his presentation. He presented what he wanted to present. I just think it's been a matter of us figuring out how to how to pay for it, and so, you know, it comes back to. I I don't think we need any further justification. I think everybody understands why we need this, and we're not asking to hire twenty officers. Uh, I I think it's, it's just simply a matter of figuring out how we, how we pay for it. Uh, what's the, and and to say we've got fund balance, I mean, all all I say of the fund balance argument is, the money's sitting there, but it's not reoccurring money that's going to be continued to be put there. We, I'm, there's no, there's no kidding when I tell you already, if you try to move our current organization into twenty twenty-three, don't change. don't change a thing, just move the organization. We're likely gapped about a million to a million two right now, unless we hit a miracle, another miracle with sales tax. And I don't know that anybody in this economy should be banking on that. So outside of that, we're already gapped going into our next year's budget. So if we take money from the fund balance, fund the police department with additional resources now, that gets us through this year, but come the fall, we, we still will be trying to figure out where the money's going to come from. And that, that was the mistakes of previous administrations, was relying on the fund balance that you work hard to save, to have to use for things. I, I think, yes, right now, the fund balance temporarily is in excess of what a healthy recommendation would be. But prior to the end of the fiscal year, when we're done taking care of the obligations that need to be taken care of, I believe the fund balance will likely be right in the two and a half to $3 million mark where, where it would be considered healthy. There's not going to be an overabundance of money. So it, it isn't that I also am not looking for every way we could, we could put more resources to the police department, but I don't know that the fund balance is anything other than a solution right now that wouldn't, wouldn't be able to carry us. What, how are we long-term going to, to, to fund this?
I can be excused for just one moment.
Do you want Steve to finish it up?
No, I'll be right back.
Mike?
Yes.
Is that who you're looking?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking to me.
So. As hard as drugs go, drug use increases in declining cities and declining neighborhoods. We want to just, you know, continue the decline, which has been decades. Our population's gone down and there's less people to pay. And it's, you know, you were at, this city was going to run out of money in 2023 and, and huge changes were going to take place. Once you're in bankruptcy, you have no say. All contracts are void. People, people and they're relying on their retirement, worked their whole life for the city. That was, that was going to change. Their health insurance was going to change and the people working, their health insurance was going to change. So you can hire all the police and hire all the firemen that we can afford and you're going to be right back in the same situation. The city was in decay. It was unkept. And now we're spending money to finally clean up the waterfront, which will market, sell, will have increased property tax in the future from it. Nobody's going to, nobody's going to build in this city. Nobody's going to build in this city at $60 per thousand. They're just not. You know, it is, it is unaffordable with a mortgage or the cost of putting a factory or whatever business you put in here. It's not going to happen if we don't change things. No, we're, we're a northern city and we're facing the same problems as every city in the northeast. And, and, and our policies in all the cities is the same and that's what's killing us. Every city, think about in the northeast and the decline. And what are they doing? What, they're all doing the same thing. They're not reinvesting in their, in their community and in their city. We invest in this city. This city has so much potential and that waterfront is our potential. And if we take money and divert it from that, we're never going to grow the revenue. So as soon as you get these departments up where they should be, but we can't afford them, it's all going to go back down again. It did before. You all saw the condition of the city. So the other thing is, it's just, we have this fund balance. Thank God, if people complain about this fund balance like it's a bad thing, thank God that we all, we don't have 600,000, that we have 6.1 million dollars. Because now we can do things. We can do that ready project. We can fix those parts up that were in a decline. Because, and then we can restore our, our pump station, our sewage pump station, $1.8 million. I mean, we have a fire truck, a million dollar fire truck that's paid for. That, that is all controlled from the ground and it has a hydraulic nozzle that you can move the ladder, the nozzle and help fire the fire. You know what? I never hear anybody speak positive about the blessing of that fire truck. And yet we own a fire truck. It was 30 years old. So other communities are struggling right now to bond and come up with the money. Watertown.
I'd like to thank Patty Ritchie on that. She gave us a, kind of a secret, beautiful look for that fire truck.
She did not. It was the Financial Restructuring Board founder and stuff.
You're thinking of the white vehicle, the utility vehicle.
Oh, yeah.
That's a good idea.
And, and.
I know.
You know, and, and it's not used. When do you see that white vehicle? Because some firemen didn't like that it was white. That vehicle's never used. It sits in there. You see it now? It just sits there. So they kept driving the old fire truck and the ashes fell off it. Cause it, cause that one was wrong. We just. So this is, if you want to turn the city around long-term, start, we need to start thinking differently. If we had the money and could rebuild the city and, and fund these departments, we would. But it's, it's, you're not going to have it for long. And you're going to have a, you know, the, the DPW, their equipment was, was junk. When, when 2019, the, the fire chief talked about the trucks having no floors in them. The police cars were like that.
That's why we took all those actions with the Financial Restructuring Board, things like that.
You leased, yeah.
Got a reset.
So, and that grant pays a percent for a short time. Every, this grant, grant, grant thing is, is, it only lasts so long. You gotta have revenue, your own revenue to fund your city.
Correct, but without using the Financial Restructuring Board money, we would have never been able to afford the startup for that program. It was designed to be a startup for that program so we could move forward with it. It was never designed to be a self-sustaining thing. It was designed because the city did not have the startup funds to start a lease. That was the whole purpose behind it. We used it for its intended purpose.
And then it's.
It doesn't deserve an applause. I mean, it's just, we did what we were supposed to do.
Financial Restructuring Board is wonderful.
They pretty much laid it out for you. Do this, do that. Okay, we did that, then we did buy, then we did see.
Like Tully said tonight, you were accomplished in things, maybe at a different pace.
You, you weren't, you weren't accomplished in anything. Sarah Porty said in July 2019, you're falling off.
Are we gonna, I just want to know, are we going to discuss the past for the next hour and a half? Or can we just move down this agenda? Because we all have things to do.
I, I think if it's an item for discussion and he's discussing something, I think he has the floor.
But we're in old business.
Please be respectful.
Because you don't like here yet.
That was fun in 2019 and that's why we got new contracts and a new healthcare program. And we were getting ourselves on our feet and with the help of the state and it was wonderful. And, and you guys continued that process and then laid off at a faster pace.
No, no, again, because, no, no, Mike.
Everyone's laid off. They all took the incentive.
You know the forecast of 2020? You couldn't know March of 2020. It was impossible because state aid was getting cut, if you remember right. They were going to hold our, some of our money. Sales tax was like, nobody knew what was going to happen. We're, we're, we're just a freak of nature in the North Country that survived it. They still don't know why. And even you can say stimulus money all you want, but there's, it's really, I think it's just because the people here are so poor for so long, they don't know any better. So it just, the money went well.
They didn't know any better, increased sales tax revenue. It was all due to, it was all due to, to.
All went down, Mike. And all those, all that forecast said we were going to be in peril. So some of the moves that were made in 2020 was because, so you were proactive and not react. And I know you said wait, we should wait and see what happens. Well, what do you do in the end? You have to go back in the minutes. I can find it for you.
Okay. Does anyone else have, I do some discussion?
I just went on the survey results. Can we do one that has a none of the above option? Because I'm getting a lot of that. We've had several people here at council ask for it. So I just didn't know if that's an option. Because I know a lot of people are saying they did not participate because that wasn't an option and they didn't want it closed at all. So can we release that with a none of the above?
I support more.
They have to have the time. They're short-staffed. Just so everybody is, everyone's.
Right, and we're telling the police department to do more with less. We're telling the fire department to do more with less. We'll do more with less. If it's okay for them, it's okay for us.
They are doing more with less.
So what's the difference? So can we close the city to crime on Sundays because they want to have dinner with their family? How we can't have fires on Thursdays because they want to have lunch with their kids? Like, it doesn't work like that.
We, we, we could have, you know, the sheriffs in St. Cooper do our nice.
Okay.
It's an idea. So. I mean.
But I, I believe you didn't have a majority to do that.
Okay. Is that it for, now we all have citizen participation. We wish to talk, now we're closing, we have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Arlene Kai. I live at 324 Ken Street, Steve, so you can remember that. We live in a neighborhood that has had drugs for years. We had shootings in our neighborhood. OPD has been there with us for years. They brought in the DA, Kevin Wells. We had a special meeting at the police department. You want to worry about a beach? What about the taxpayer's safety? We don't care about a beach. We live in a school zone. We don't care about your little plans. Safety first for these police officers. They don't even have time to push the pen like you do. They can't do their paperwork because they're short-staffed. In the fire department, you should think of their safety first. Not this nice little beach that's a joke. But use your head for once.
Anyone else like to speak? Anyone remotely?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. We're going to make a motion for adjournment. All those in.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.